Rose, the town planner.
Steve Dutton, alternate.
Patty Galestaff.
Alan Jaiton, chairman.
Barbara Griffin, member.
Carlos Adams, member.
Tim Redmond, vice chair.
We do have a quorum. Let's start with some of the business action on the minutes of a meeting of November 18th, 2010. Is there any corrections, additions, deletions from members of the board?
Motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second? Motion by Tim, seconded by Carlos. Any further comments on the minutes of November 18th? Seeing none, I'll call the... For a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You are a voting member?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. And the chairman votes yes, motion carries. Now, Brian, can you address number two? I didn't want to sit here and volunteer, Mr. Dutton.
Yes.
We all did.
You notice he's here tonight to pre fear something might happen.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton.
You have revised correspondence, too. It's been distributed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number two is a letter from Wally Star and Peters, P L L C, regarding the Dobstown Harvest Christian Church. And we received this letter in the mail from Mr. Michael Tierney from Wally Star and Peters. And you've all been copied on that by email, and you've also got copies in front of you of the letter. And tonight was not noticed for any public hearing or just, or really any discussion on this topic. And so I want to preface all of this with just a recommendation that it's not appropriate to discuss the merits of the letter or the project in and of itself. But we do have some information that the Z B A agreed to and decided to do a rehearing on January the 4th, 2011, in a notice public hearing for this project. And so based on that fact, and I've been advised by Attorney Drescher that this is the best appropriate action that we can take on this. Based on that fact that they've decided to rehear the variance, staff finds it reasonable to request and recommends that the planning board vacate the earlier decision of November 18th, 2010, to deny the site plan based, or the time extension regarding the Harvest Christian Church, and then agree to reconsider the matter on January 13th, which is the first planning board meeting in January, in a fully, fully noticed public hearing. So, that's what I have.
Are we discussing this, or we just?
Yeah, I guess I have-
If we're going to get into a lengthy discussion, I'm going to postpone it until the end of the meeting.
Well, I guess my question is, is that if we're not having a fully noticed public hearing, and if we're not supposed to discuss the contents of the letter, and if we're not supposed the merits of the, supposed to discuss the merits of the application, so essentially we have no information in front of us, why would we be doing a motion to reconsider? What would be the basis of that?
Based on the Z B A's decision to rehear.
But wouldn't that go to a motion to reconsider if the Z B A made a different decision after rehearing?
Well-
I think you'd have to notice to do a motion to reconsider.
I can't make a motion, we can't accept a motion without a public hearing.
I don't, I mean, I'm just having confusion as to how it was recommended that we take an action when it was also discussed that we shouldn't be discussing the application. Or, and I know you're just doing what was reported to you. That's my issue with it. I mean, the Z B A can do what they want, but as far as I'm concerned, nothing is different than when we had it last time.
Tim?
I, without talking about this letter, I briefly scanned it, and I would request that the, Brian, review all the items in this letter to be sure that all the statements in this letter are, in fact, true.
And do they apply?
And do they apply to our, our process? I mean, there's some, I scanned the letter, and there's some things in here that I don't, I want to make sure that they're factual in nature, and I need you to verify that.
I'll be reviewing that with Attorney Drescher this week. In fact, he is checking his schedule, and we're trying to set it up to have him come in and address the board in person so that you can have his official determination on what is the most appropriate course of action. I think what we're all trying to do, and there's, there's a representative from the attorney's office here, just sort of to be here and to answer any questions that you may have as well. But I think we'd like to try to stay out of court if possible on this. And so we're, we're, I don't think this is going against any decisions that the planning boards really made. The basis of the last decision that the planning board made was the Z B A denied the variance, and so we're not going to hear it. Well, now the Z B A has given the opening to discuss it again. And so I don't think it's inappropriate to put it off the table, is maybe the way to say it.
I'm not sure I quite understand. But I thought the condition of appearance before the board or approval by the board or a vote by the board would require a, a positive approval by the Z B A. We have in all cases required that to happen before we voted on any conditions, et cetera, of any project.
Which would be the case as far as it is concerned with a reconsideration decision, the actual decision you make on the time extension. The choice you have before you tonight is only to choose to reconsider it. That's the difference.
I guess I'll just say I'm not inclined to reconsider it unless the Z B A. If what you're telling me is the basis this is coming forward is because the Z B A has essentially decided to reconsider their decision, which is what a rehearing is. If they have a different outcome of the vote after rehearing, then to me, that's a basis for me possibly to vote affirmative to a reconsideration. I guess I'm not hearing what's happened now that would cause me to reconsider it.
The, the date that they have set for their rehearing is prior to when this reconsideration by the planning board would be. And so, at least to keep it open, the, the problem is, is the appeal period for this decision ends on December 17th. And so, you know, if possible, we're trying to avoid an appeal being filed with the court. And so, we're trying to at least start that process prior to when that appeal period is over. And, and then when we get to the decision in January, then we would know what the Z B A had decided on, if they decide at that meeting. If they continue it, then, you know, that could be continued again from the planning board, but...
And if, and if the applicant applies to the, the general court, that would stay any decision to this board, would it not? Jim? If, if an applicant, based upon denial, appeals that decision of the board, doesn't that stay any further action of the planning board? Or can they still further consider that decision or rehearing or whatever, even though they filed that?
Well, we've done that in the past by agreement without waiting.
But technically, I think you're right.
But see, technically, I don't want the applicant to lose their rights either on appeal.
Yeah, the issue here is, assuming we're willing to let this arguably to proceed, we don't want to compel them to file an appeal to preserve their right.
That's right.
It, it falls into, it's not, the statute's not clear on this resolution, so making reasonable rules. But, and we're not granting the extension either because, per se, because we go through typically our review to see what changes have, you know, a usual question for granted. But we, we didn't want the decision to compel them to go to court if it's going to come back before us and be in the same position again. If there's some way to resolve that without deciding the ultimate issue of whether we, in fact, are going to extend it on a permanent basis. I'm, I'm not convinced by their arguments necessarily, but by the, um... Given the unusual situation here, there's, if you look at equity, what's a fair resolution to keep this thing alive without making people go to court? How's that for a lawyerly response? It says nothing.
Well, I semi-understand it. How's that?
That's not bad. It's better than me.
I, for, as a member of the board, don't have a particular problem with trying to find a way to make a decision after the Z B A does. I just don't know what the technical thing that has to be done to let that happen.
Well, according, according to Attorney Drescher, and he provided this guidance to me earlier today, and he, he sat and told me, type this out word by word, and this is what you should recommend to the planning board as a, as a motion. And that's to, to, to move that because of the fact that the Z B A in the related variance case has agreed to rehear the matter, to move that we, that the planning board vacate the earlier decision on the 18th of November and agree that the matter be reconsidered by us on the January 13th meeting in a fully noticed public hearing.
All right. I have just one question. Did they have a special exception or a variance initially? What expired?
Variance?
I thought they had a special exception.
To my understanding, it was a variance.
The minutes indicate it was a variance.
For what?
The, the Z B A minutes of-
Our minutes.
November 13th specifically say that they had a special exception. And that they were seeking a variance because of the change in the zoning ordinance. If I'm not mistaken. So, to me, it's two separate cases to begin with, because once a special exception has different conditions up for consideration than a variance does. If I'm not mistaken, also.
What was the variance granted for?
A variance, I believe, was granted for the steeple and the height of the steeple and the church itself. Special exception was granted for having the church there.
Right, because of the zoning.
Okay.
So, it was both a special exception and a variance, I believe.
Right. That's right. It was both. I guess, is the only issue that's really driving, I, I mean, and another board member, please correct me. We're really only making this motion to prevent an appeal, really? Because there's nothing to prohibit us from taking an action in our January meeting should the Z B A take a vote contrary to what they just took to then decide to reconsider our action and set it for public hearing in the second meeting in January or in February, right?
Correct. I would say that's probably accurate. I don't know the ins and outs of when it's okay to, or how, how long of a time it can be before you can not reconsider a decision. I don't know.
But I think-
I think it's a, it's better to do it probably within those first 30 days as well, just like the appeal.
Well, it's appeal, there's also an appeal process time for any Z B A decision also, which is 30 days. So, I, I, but in, in instance, I just don't want to put in a position where someone files an appeal while we're in the process and we approve the plan. But it shouldn't matter, I don't think.
All right, if the zoning board approves the variance and special exception, I don't, I don't understand why there would be an appeal.
Any individual can appeal a decision of the Z B A.
That's correct. That's unlikely.
Oh, I've heard unlikely too many times in my life. So, it needs to be in the proper sequence of events to ensure that the application is treated fairly.
Well, another recommendation could be that you forward it to a later date, past the 30-day appeal deadline, you know, at some date in February, that it would be heard and approved, instead of waiting for, or doing it right away after, in the first meeting in January.
Okay. But Tim had his hand up first, so I'll get to you afterwards. Tim?
Is the, is an applicant required to notify the planning department prior to the expiration date to request an extension?
Yeah.
30 days in writing?
Yes.
Did that happen?
Yes.
It did happen.
I just want to be sure that, if we're talking about procedures, that all procedures were followed.
Yep. Carlos?
Well, I guess my question is, what is the danger vacating our earlier decision to allow the Z B A process to proceed and come to a conclusion and bringing it back to us after that action? And what, does that put us at some disadvantage or?
I don't know. Maybe our imminent member down here will tell us.
Well, we're making up a procedure. Somebody could say, where's your authority for doing that? I'm just going to say, well, we did it. So, okay, we've done that before.
We have.
And second, and we'll continue it in the future when we need to. And because the statutes don't cover all events. Second, I don't want us to waive our ability to review this essentially on its merits when it comes back to us. On that note, I will say, I do not like to be threatened. And if this attorney puts this stuff into another letter and thinks we're going to be impressed by it, he should change his mind, because that's not what we're responding to. And I don't think I need to read this in any more letters from him. But I'll set that aside for the time being.
Understood. Lowell, you've got any observations or comments or... I want to, I want to hear from everybody if you've got some comment, because we're going to have to vote on this thing here. Or I'd like to see some kind of a motion and a vote. Steve?
Just making sure that I understand what the recommendation is. The, the recommendation was to, is to reconsider the decision primarily based on the new fact that it's, it's now set for a rehearing before the Z B A, and that could change the basis of the prior decision, and then set up the discussion on the here, on the merits of the rehearing, of the reconsideration sometime after the Z B A rehearing.
That's right. And if the Z B A hears the case, they may also add conditions to that, whatever decision they make, which may influence us.
As may we when, yeah, when we do.
Barbara?
I just want to say that I think we actually foresaw those issues and already dealt with them at the last meeting. First of all, I made a motion to set this item on the agenda for the planning board meeting in January to consider it subject to a variance being granted. That, I pulled that motion prior to a second when it was discovered that the variance had actually lapsed in June and that the application before the Z B A was untimely at best. And I said that we are way beyond the dates that this should be validly in front of the Z B A, so I'm not inclined to keep this open in front of this board, and it was withdrawn. And then when the motion was made in regards to this, it was said it was to deny the extension on the grounds that it, that, that the variance had lapsed so that there was no site plan in effect to act upon, to direct the applicant to obtain whatever necessary from the Z B A, and then come back to the planning board with a new application. And at that time, we will determine what is appropriate for the application. So, I mean, I think we've already handled it. We haven't said they can't come back, and I think, as I recall, we even discussed fees and whether or not they would have to pay new fees to bring the application back. So, I, you know, I suspect that Drescher got this letter, which is incomplete, in some cases inaccurate, and at best fails to completely set forth the history of what happened. And I think we left the door open for a new application if the zoning process changed, if the zoning outcome changes. So, I don't understand why we're getting this. But then we have a lawyer's letter and three lawyers on this board, so we could argue this all night long, because that's what we do.
We could all send you outside.
We'll go send all the rest draws.
But in looking at it, I thought we had given them some direction when we made that motion, and that we understood that they were, they were not in peril with that motion, meaning that there is the opportunity there, because we can't predict when and if and under what conditions the Z B A would act.
And I think we did that because we didn't want to end up into one of these extended applications that has been pretty horrendous, that we've been through a couple of times, with all sorts of ancillary proceedings going on.
I'll go around to them one more time. Phil, you haven't said anything.
No, I haven't said anything, because I'm listening, and the points that were brought up were accurate about the discussion that we had. And we even had, we did have a discussion about the fees, and we did have a discussion to the effect that the application process should be fairly quick because of the application that had been in prior, that's in the planning apartment.
And I don't think we ever asked for any additional information for any compliance with up-to-date ordinances or state codes in terms of drainage or weather wise. I think we're looking at it straight.
I don't know that we went into that detail in our discussion.
We didn't go into that detail.
So, I wouldn't go there, but...
Okay. Steve?
I, I guess I don't have anything further, but I, I wasn't at the November 18th meeting. In terms of the discussion on fees, did we make a decision on what that would, whether or not we'd be waiving fees if they reapplied, or?
No.
Or just that we would consider the request?
At that time.
They could request to waive fees.
Which was consistent with what we had done with another-
Consistent with what we've done in the past.
Yep.
Lowell?
Would there be any benefit or detriment to doing this at that January 13th meeting? And since there was also some question about whether we can even have a motion without a public hearing? Or is that too late and that starts something else? Court proceedings moving on?
My understanding is they have until December 17th to appeal the decision that we made on the 18th of November. And I don't want them to lose that right. Either appeal or, I don't think we can forego that. And then suddenly say, since he didn't appeal it, we're out of luck. You know, when he comes back to us again, he should have appealed it back in the 17th. I don't want to ever hear that if he decides not to do that and wants to work with the board, the applicant wants to work with the board subsequent to the Z B A hearing on January 4th or 5th. Doesn't that make any sense at all?
Not as much as I do.
Okay. I'll go to Barbara. She'll probably make more sense of this than I.
I don't have anything further. I think it's been said.
Carlos?
Tim?
Well, based on everything Barbara laid out, I think we left the door wide open for the Harvest Christian Church to come back, to reapply after a zoning decision was made. As was mentioned, we even discussed waiving fees as, as a good faith gesture. So, I personally find this letter from the attorneys to be premature. And I agree with Jim, it's, it's a little bit threatening, and I don't like being threatened.
Yes, sir.
Well, if we're going to end up in the same place in a few weeks, I'm always in favor of taking the easier route to get there.
Great.
And if granting the, notwithstanding that I don't like this letter, I've said that many times, of course it is, you know, I agree with it. But if we're going to end up with it back before us and we can save the filing, appeal, and Mr. Drescher having to file an answer where it's just going to be back before us, and we're not waiving anything, I don't mind following the procedure Attorney Drescher has laid out for us, because it puts us in the same place when, if and when Z B A, if, if Z B A grants a variance on reconsideration, we'll then have it before us at that point. Since they're looking for an extension, we'd still go through our usual drill of looking at compliance with-
Current standards.
We could, yeah. Now, they're going to say they're vested. That's a different argument. We can look at that. This isn't an application that I have a lot of concerns about either way. If I recall, the client, Carlos may have a better memory of it. So, I, I guess I don't mind the proposal that was made.
The terminology, vacate the vote, is that the proper terminology?
Yeah, we'd, we'd move to vaca, we'd, we'd entertain a motion to reconsider. Just like in the Z B A, it doesn't require a public hearing. If we use the Z B A proceedings as an analogy, we could move to reconsider and schedule it for further decision and further review at some point and grant a temporary extension to that date of whatever rights that they have, which we won't decide whether they do or not.
Okay.
Part of the language, Jim, just before you had come in, I think I read the language that Attorney Drescher had given us, but that did include the language to vacate the, the earlier decision, so...
I think that, yeah.
I like yours better.
Didn't matter.
Want to make that a motion?
Okay.
Have a motion or the?
Are you doing reconsider or are you doing the vacate?
Well, we can, we can-
This was vacate and reconsider.
Okay. Whatever.
There we go. Cover all the bases.
True.
To vacate and reconsider our early decision-
Denial-
Do you want the way-
The time extension.
On November 18th. Okay. Let's read it into the record, please. But Tim?
Lowell, I wanted you to hold off, because Jim was getting that.
Okay.
Hey, the, the motion, in my own words, or, since the Z B A has grant, has agreed to grant a rehearing, I move that we vacate our early decision on the, on November 18th, this case. I agree that we will reconsider this on January 13th. Is that the date we're going to go on? Or do we want to pick some later date? When's, when's, when's the?
That's also your public hearings for zoning changes.
That's okay. We could do that on the 13th.
Okay.
Okay, well, I mean, will Z B A have-
Rendered their decision.
They did, on January 5th.
On January 4th is the date.
Okay, so I'll keep that, that, that a notice public hearing in that we agree to extend whatever rights without deciding they are that the applicant had as of November 18th to that date, without prejudice to our usual review on requests to extend.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Carlos. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing now, I'll move the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay. Nay.
Three opposed.
Phil, Tim, Barbara opposed. Chairman votes in affirmative.
Four, three.
Four, three. Thank you. You're patient on that. Why don't we take care of item number three, because it should take only two seconds? And I beg the people in the audience to attention for a couple of minutes. Brian, number three.
Mr. Chair, number three is basically a recommendation request that Steve Dutton be appointed the planning board representative to the economic development chair, or economic development commit, committee, commission?
Mr. Chair.
Counsel. Counsel.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Brian may have misread that. I think the EDC asked for representative. They didn't ask for Steve Dutton. We volunteered Steve Dutton.
We did, we did volunteer Steve Dutton and he graciously agreed on the phone.
I just want to be sure that it was read correctly.
I think the motion by the board would be that we recommend him for the position on the EDC, so.
I'll move. Motion by Phil, seconded by Barbara to appoint Stephen Dutton, elected member of the Gofftown Planning Board to the Gofftown Economic Development Council.
Quick vote before it changes his mind.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for taking my place.
Glad you didn't vote no for extension.
Mary. I see we have a member of the Southern New Hampshire Planning Group present. Do we want to, do we have a timeframe on his presentation?
What is it?
What is?
Not even on the agenda.
Currently, that's at the end of the agenda. It's under zoning.
Oh, amendments.
Proposed zoning amendments.
Okay, do you want to do it first or last?
I think we need to.
Okay, we're moving on, so, okay. It's recommended by my cohort, so we move on. Under new business, map 18 lot 58B, completeness review, site plan amendment review hearing for a proposal to allow Planet Fitness Health Club hours of operation to be changed to 24 hours of operations. Owner, GP Gofftown Plaza LLC, care of Jega Management Inc., Mastro Zone Commercial. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, as you stated, a request from Planet Fitness for an hours of operation change. And the detail of the request is to change it from a Monday to Friday, five to 11:00 schedule to 24 hours operation between 12:00 AM Monday through Friday at 9:00 PM. So, basically Monday through Friday. And they'll end at 9:00 PM on Friday night. And then Saturday and Sunday hours would remain the same, seven to seven as, as currently scheduled. This is the location of the project. It's in the Shaw's Plaza. There's a zoning map that shows different zones that are around the plaza, mostly surrounded by commercial. However, on the south side, behind the, the center, is some residential. Or, I'm sorry, the north side is residential two and one building of RSBO two. And the applicant has recently pulled building permits already for their tenant improvement. So, they're, they are working on getting going and opening. The town has received several support letters, which have been included in your packet for, in support of the hours of operation change. We did receive one letter in opposition to the change and that was provided for your reading as well. All the butters were notified at this public hearing. It was decided that it needed a public hearing because it was going to a more intense type of timeframe than what, what they had before, so. The recommendation from staff is that the board find that this application is complete application, there's no regional impact and that they, at the board, hear the applicant's proposal and here, hold a public hearing to hear from the public and then resolve any remaining issues. Staff recommendation is that the site plan amendment for hours of operation be approved as requested. That's it.
Chairman?
Thank you, Brian. Yes?
Make a motion that the application is complete and does not have a regional impact.
Clear, a second.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Phil. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, open the, is there somebody representing the applicant present? You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joseph Fresky. I'm the general counsel for Planet Fitness. And my first hope is that you don't send me outside with the other lawyers on the board to decide this motion. And secondly, that the procedural aspects are a lot simpler than the first matter I heard when I came in. But my early training as a, as an attorney was that if you are ahead of the game, that you really should keep your mouth quiet. So, since the board has, or the planning department has recommended approval, I'm here to answer any questions. And I've also brought with me Mr. Tom DeShitner, who is a key operator, has been working in the construction at the location here in Goffstown. So, I really just ask if there's any questions.
Mr. Raymond?
I don't know where in the plaza this located.
You remember where Blockbuster Video was?
No.
If you, do you know where?
I go shopping.
It's in the old plaza. As you drive in, it's on the left side.
Is it on the side?
Right there. Right there.
So, it's side closest to the residential, which is.
Does it, which way does it face?
Faces the parking lot.
Faces the parking lot.
To the main, to the main parking lot.
The main parking lot.
Okay. So, which, listen, my next question is, is lighting and noise at night the concerns that the butters would have, particularly the residential. But I'd like the applicant to address that, those.
I might actually ask Mr. DeShitner to come up as well, as far as the lighting.
We don't believe lawyers anyways.
Fair enough. What I do know is that the landlord has agreed to keep the lighting. What I don't know is if that lighting may be on 24 hours a day.
Yes, it is. They're on a photocell, so they are.
So, they're on already, I guess is really.
Twenty-four hours.
Okay, and what about noise? It's going to be.
Name for the record.
I'm sorry? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
My name is Tom DeShitner, as Mr. Joe Fresky stated.
What you saying, the lights are on currently?
The lights are a photocell, so they don't go off. They are powered by, they're solar powered, so.
And based upon the number of people that come between 11:00 and 5:00 AM, it's, represents a small fraction of your total business volume.
Correct, a handful, handful of people. We do like to have that option for the people that work second, third shift. Everybody should have the chance to come and work out.
And I do think the other key factor there is that somebody brought up, the front of the entrance is facing the parking lot.
Correct.
So, you know, I drove around it earlier today to see. I think it's the distance and the fact that you've got the building there with the noise.
We don't receive any deliveries on the back end of the building. I did see the residential back there, but it is quiet. You could go by there anytime and it's, you could hear a mouse.
Question?
Members of board, Barbara?
Is that, where is the 24-hour ATM on this diagram, Brian?
That little dot.
Right there.
The Bank of America is right in the same parking lot.
That thing right there?
The McDonald's too, which I believe is the building right under the word commercial, right? That's, that, that drive-through is open 24.
24-hour drive-through.
Right, but I mean, I just, that ATM is open all the time, right? Okay, and it's the same entrance that would be getting used for?
Same parking lot, yes.
Same parking lot, same, okay.
Carlos?
There is a driveway right here to, to this area, but it doesn't access the parking lot over here. So, really, it only comes in and out.
It's like for deliveries on the back.
Correct.
It's only for deliveries. And you can't access the front of the building from that driveway. So, you have to come in at the middle entrance over here and then access the parking lot over here.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure I understand the layout properly. Being familiar with the building, it's a solid building. There's no opportunities for headlights to go through the building in any direction. And as I recall, the residences along the back, aren't they also significantly lower in topography?
They're actually higher. It's a berm and there's a fence.
Over there, on, on the, on the north side.
No, the ones timed towards the river are lower.
Those are lower.
Those are lower, yes. The ones directly behind us are actually up on a berm with a fence.
Right, and I'm thinking about headlights, Stephen. If they can't get through the building and those on the backside, the north side are lower.
Most of that's protected by the other, the other buildings in the center.
Yeah, just want to confirm that.
Tim?
I'll wait.
Lowell? I'm assuming that your statement about like the number of clients you'd expect, you know, during the night is based on other locations.
Correct, yes. The majority of our corporate home facilities are 24 hours of operation.
So, this facility that you're going to be opening here is similar in size then to, to your other ones?
Yes.
It's actually a little bit smaller. And so, just to give you a percentage, it's probably 2% is pretty typical between the hours of, say, 11:00 and 4:00 or 5:00 AM. On a 12,000 square foot, it might be 5, 6,000 members. And I should be clarified that. Of those 5, 6,000 members, only so many work out. So, I think that, that actually keep coming, so. It's truly a handful of, of people. So, part of it's literally the marketing. Part of it's to serve those people who are working, you know, those swing shifts.
Stephen?
I have nothing, Ed.
Phil?
No, I have no.
Do we have any other questions of the applicant? Anything else you'd like to tell us? You'll get a chance to respond to any other comments. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in favor or, or about this particular project? Seeing none, does the board have any other questions of the applicant? Do we have any remaining issues to resolve? Tim?
Well, should we consider the fact that there are other gyms in the Canardell area that may want to come in with the same request?
Sure, we could. Why not?
Well, just as long as, if we're going to, if we're going to have a precedent that we would allow this to happen, we have to be prepared for other applicants to come forward in the future in, that are in different settings.
Well, if they're in a different setting, there would be different considerations at the, at the time of application.
Just as long as it's been mentioned.
Lowell?
And just a little bit of a variation on that, not a different setting, but what do we think if other businesses in that same plaza start coming in then? Because that would be a precedent.
Well, I'm going to close.
I don't see that's a big issue, but we need to be aware.
I'd like to close the public hearing before we get into discussion here.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Hearing no additional information from the client, applicant, or the public, we'll close the public hearing. Members of the board? Barbara first.
I think a distinguishing point for this application for 24-hour operation is the fact that it is part of the corporate franchise promotion, that they are 24 hours a day during the week. And I think it really is pretty limited use. I know like, for example, McGregor Street is 24 hours a day, which is going to be much more inclined to be sort of used 24 hours a day. And that has not been an issue over there in the mill buildings. I actually am not, I have to say, I'm, with the ATM there in that parking lot, I've always wondered about people using that ATM in the middle of the night there. And frankly, I think it brings a little bit of safety to that particular ATM dispenser because I've never really understood who would want to park and walk over to that ATM in the middle of the night. And I, frankly, I think people going in and out is not a bad thing. We did get a, a letter from Mr. Goth here and I apologize to him if I'm mispronouncing his name. I'd actually request that this letter be forwarded to the police department because it appeared to me that, he said it's not necessary and I'm 100% against it for whatever that's worth. But if you look at his letter, what he's really talking about is that he appears to be talking about people cruising around that plaza as it is now in the back. And I'd like it forwarded to the police department because I've never heard that complaint in my various capacities on boards here. And if that has increased, it needs to be addressed. And I don't think that has anything to do with 24-hour operation of the health club. So, those are my comments on it.
Carlos?
Yeah, I'm not concerned with the request. I've, I've heard comments about what if others want to do it. Well, every situation is unique. Every situation is, is distinct and we need to consider them one at a time. As far as this one goes, I don't have a problem with the request at all.
Tim?
I've already said my piece.
Tim?
I, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, but I, I don't agree with Barbara. I stopped right there, but yeah, because it's their national program. We once had a gas station over here say, we had to allow a certain color because that's their national program. And we said, no, no, this is Gofftown, so. But, but the fact that it otherwise makes sense is a compelling reason. And because of the nature of the, the site and the minimal adverse impact it's going to have, I, I'm in favor of it.
That's what happened to the national colors anyways.
Lowell?
Yeah, I don't have any real issue with, with this particular instance. But like I was starting to say earlier, I think we need to be aware that it does set a precedent. And would we be thinking the same kind of thing if, say, something bigger like Shaw's wanted to stay open around the clock?
Okay.
Same plaza.
Okay. We'll consider it when it happens. Steve?
Then would, would you be able to differentiate and say, well, they did, why can't we?
Of course we can. Get in and go to court.
We'll find out later, won't we?
You get a letter from one.
Phil?
No, I, I, I'm in favor of it. Also, I mean, as pointed out, McDonald's is 24/7. My understanding Dunkin' Donuts across the street is also 24/7. Not necessarily that they are open, but they do have the approval for it.
We can go work out and then go eat donuts.
That's right.
Life is good.
It's the opposite way around. Eat the donuts, then go work out.
The other way around.
Mr. Chair, I move that.
I need a motion here.
I move that we approve the, I think it's a site plan amendment to allow the hours of operation as described in the application subject to the condition that the additional hours do not create a nuisance and we reserve the right to review it if the operations do.
You want to add by name, Planet Fitness? Well, you, you. Because now, now you made a motion because the applicant was the mall owner.
Oh, oh, that the, well, that's right. So, that the Planet Fitness or the PlaFit Health LLC is tenant operating as Planet Fitness may operate its current operation in the described hours.
Clear, a second. Seconded by Carlos. Any discussion on the motion?
I append it based upon, as a introductory clause, on the basis of the representations made by the applicant about the scope and impact of the operation, comma.
Carlos?
Second that minor, second that minor amendment.
We second. Hearing no discussion, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. That doesn't mean I'm going to be over there at 2:00 AM.
Sign up online. Thank you.
You're going to do your exercise online too?
Under old business, map six lot 14-1 and 14-3, subdivision review hearing for proposed lot line adjustment, James Modesto owner, Goffstown Backroads owned agricultural and R-1 continued from November 18th, 2010. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you stated, this is the James Modesto lot line adjustment. And this was before you on the November 18th hearing. There were a few comments, staff concerns to get worked out prior. And then we did a quick turnaround on this and brought it back to the board tonight. And Mr. Don Duval is the applicant for the project. He's been working on getting everything taken care of. Basically, they did address all of staff concerns. So, there really is nothing remaining from staff prior to approval that we had concerns about. So, our recommendation, and, oh, and by the way, I'll go back one slide. Last time, a waiver was granted for topography on the south side of the lots based on the condition that a note be added to restrict any development on the south side. condition that a note be added to restrict any development on the south side, that note was added to the plan. So that now is in compliance. As I stated, all remaining issues have been worked out. The applicants even began to work on some of the conditions that have been put into the staff report. So those are already even somewhat in compliance. So the recommendation is to hear the applicant's proposal, continue the public hearing, and then approve the subdivision, subject to the conditions one through eight on this, on this plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Members of the board, did we ever file a motion for no regional impact and the application was complete? I don't think we did. So as a matter of housekeeping, I'll accept the motion. Did we?
No, it did.
It did?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did.
Okay. Who is, who is here representing the applicant, which to present to us? Mr. Duval?
Yes, Don Duval for the applicant.
The laser?
What's it?
Laser is the red one, if you want a laser pointer.
You just don't wheel it around like that.
Where's the airplanes? Essentially, this is a lot line adjust-
Motion seconded.
Essentially, this is a lot line adjustment for two existing lots of record. We have received a variance from the zoning board, basically because one of the existing lots, let's see if I can work this thing, only had 57 feet of frontage. We're keeping the same frontage, we're not changing anything with the, with the frontages on the lots. The reason we're going for the lot line adjustment because the original lot, the larger lot, basically went like this, all the way down to the river and back. Essentially, even though that lot was a six-acre lot, there was really no place that you could develop a house on it. So we're trying to come in that we can develop a house lot here. The intent of the applicant is that this lot would be utilized, bought, purchased, developed by his daughter. I think what we have gotten, we've approved from the subdivision from DES. I've just got the town approval today for the individual septic system, which I'll be submitting up to DES tomorrow. I do have my thing to hand over, the town requested the waiver municipal liability for shared drive, which I have. The release of liability for the well, which I have, and I submit to Brian in a minute. And then a signed declaration of driveway maintenance for the existing driveway between the two owners. Basically, that driveway's been in there over 20 years, so we're really not anticipating any changes to it. One condition Brian or staff wanted was that there would be no new driveway entrances for the lot 14-3. And that note is also on the plan. So I think, really, I think I've taken care of most of your comments. We have, since we received Brian's letter, have gone out and set all the monumentation on the plan. The one exception being Highway wanted a, quote, per year regulations to put a stone bound here. It was impossible to get it with the existing walls and the existing, but it's fences, so we have placed an iron pin with my survey cap on it. But it is mon, the corner is monumented. And so I think I've taken care of all the comments from staff. So any questions from the board?
Members of the board? Any questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Seeing none, they'll open a public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak in reference to this application? Seeing none, Megan, do you have any comments?
No, nothing.
Jim?
Do we need to waive our subdivision regs on the monumentation because of what Don mentioned, he couldn't put a, was that on a common boundary where regs required a monument? Or?
Okay.
Or is that implied just by approving the plan?
We can add that to our discussions, deliberations?
I just don't want people to start thinking that, not that Don would ever do that.
Okay. Any other members of the board have questions of the applicant? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Members of the board?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that the conditions noted as one through seven and conditions subsequent is number eight. And to the extent required that we waive the stone bound for the reasons stated by the applicant and accept the, the iron pin.
Second?
Seconded by Carlos. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes in affirmative, motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. On other business, conceptual hearing for a proposal to reinstate religious assembly in historical church building on North Mass Street. Former vestry shop applicant Granite State, if I pronounce this wrong, I apologize, Kristo Delphalian?
I got purple.
Chapel owner, Second Methodist Church Zone Village Commercial District. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you stated, this is the Granite State Krista Delphian Church.
Thank you for the correction.
And, oh, okay. So I'm wrong, too. Well, we're both wrong. All right. The reason they're before you tonight is for a conceptual review. And it's, so, and I actually wrote on there change of use site plan, but they're not quite to the change of use stage yet. They've submitted for a condition, a conceptual review. And what the request is, is to change it back from a, back to a church from retail. It's been used for retail for a while. And it was originally built as a church, but because it's been out of church use for so long, new regulations are in place and parking requirement becomes sort of an issue. And so it's before you for conceptual review in order to get some guidances to how to deal with some of the parking issues that are abundant at the property. These are some of the photos on the, that were included in your application, in the narrative. By the way, this is the first conceptual review since we started our new conceptual review application. And the narrative, I thought, turned out quite well, that we were able to get some written information about the project, in addition to maybe drawings that normally would have just come in. These are some more, the two, the two on the first picture are basically showing Summer Street adjacent to the church. The cones that you see in there are proposed locations for potential parking.
Oh, okay.
They showed the back of the building in these photos here. And again, there's some cones-
So these pictures are being taken from Summer Street?
From Summer Street, yes. And these cones, again, are trying to illustrate potential locations of parking. This is kind of a diagram of how that works. And it's hard to see, I guess, on this, maybe with the light on, or the light turned off, it might be a little bit better. But the church building is right here on this drawing. And then they've got some images of parked cars imposed onto the top of this, superimposed, and just showing conceptual parking ideas. Here's another one with, with this being changed to three lots going this way. And we've gotten some comments from the fire department that these are sort of not really acceptable layouts of parking and that we'll have to work that out. But they just wanted to provide some type of conceptual, some place to start from, I guess, as far as how to, how to deal with parking. Now, the parking requirements on this site are far above and beyond what the number of parking that they show here for a church. So church basically has a requ, I have to probably open my zoning ordinance to remember what the actual requirement is, but a minimum parking would be something like 30 parking spaces. And there are not 30 parking spaces shown here. And so I think in order to get to the end result that they're looking for, they're going to have to come up with some creative solutions. And that would have to get planning board's blessing as far as how they would be able to deal with that. One of the proposed solutions is to have shared parking. And one of the, and shared parking has been explored, and you see in your packet some agreements to allow for a few spaces from different businesses that are abutting them. But the main one that they probably could have used was the Sully's parking lot, and that's already being used by another church. And so that's sort of why they declined to let them use it. So they're actually looking to expand out a little bit further than that and find out, find out if there's any available parking. And if the board can allow them to go that far out. There is a requirement in the zoning ordinance that says shared parking has to be within 500 feet of the municipal uses. So they may have to get some relief from that. And I believe in talking to the applicant Derek, parking is sort of something that the planning board waives and not the zoning board. Even though it's in the zoning ordinance, there's a statement in there that allows for the planning board to give, to accept lesser planning, lesser parking plans. So that's kind of the discussion that I've had with them so far. I'd like to turn it back to the board and have them come up and, and speak to their, their issues and what they, what information that they can provide, and then, and then go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Jim, looks like he has a question.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment. May I?
Yes, you may.
We've dealt with this, or, so let's set aside the building code stuff. That's not our purview and that will leave them, because the rest of the challenges of the enabled building. But whenever, whenever we face a reuse of an existing building or a new building, like Larry's Hager's store, I don't think that's the real name, we have to look at parking as an issue. And if we enforce our parking fully, we would never have a business downtown. It's just, it's the nature of downtowns. And you want a busy downtown because the option is them to go out to a mall somewhere next to Planet Fitness maybe, and then you, you don't get the life downtown. So I'm, I'm in favor of some flexibility, and particularly when you look at this use, unless they have a more tolerance for long-term services than I do, they're usually there for a fairly limited time, in a defined period of time, in a time where it's not a busy retail time, even in downtown gossip, but for Sully's, we know. So it's not, to me, it's not as critical that you have the parking that we would require, and indeed, even the amount that they show, because 12 people can always find a place to park somewhere downtown and walk. And that's not the worst thing in the world either for Goth Towns, as people, my God, have to walk to something. So I, I don't find these parking issues critical. And frankly, I would rather not make them pave over some nice grass to make parking spaces when we can have them park over in the municipal lot, walk over and stop at the, yeah. So I, I just, I just don't see, I almost see that, I see that as an issue we have to deal with, but not, not a deal breaker.
Well, this is for the board, other board members. I came down here Sunday morning just to see what it's like on Sunday morning. There were nine empty spaces right out here in the street, lined spaces. Sully's was half full. There were people parked in the churches across the street, right out to the sidewalk and on the street, like everybody else does along the street. And it was just fine. There was no imp, impetus to traffic. No one was getting run over in the street, and it wasn't busy and crazy. So I kind of go along with Jim, although I don't see how you're going to park cars on top of that ledge pile in back of the church.
I don't think we need to make them.
Well, I know, but I mean, that's a curious comment more than anything else. There's a big knob of ledge sticks right up in the back of the church. That's my observation for the day. Other members of the board? Because I'd like to have the applicant come up here and join us for a few moments and talk about what you want to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen on the board. My name is Steve Smith. And just to keep the joke going, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a simple representative. I think that Mr. Rose has really outlined our challenges fairly well. I did receive a copy of the comments that were made concerning our application. And I've addressed, I've spoken with Mr. Rose and Mr. Horn several times, probably overly, but I just trying to wrap my head around this. And also, I have met with Mr. Tessier at the building, and I have also talked with Lieutenant Connor a number of times, and have a tentative meeting with him to do a walkthrough, because there are challenges in the building, but concerning fire and safety. But his recommendation in the notations that were made on the application about the parking, the parking along Summer Street was just a, could we possibly do this? Obviously, based upon the town requirements of parking spaces per potential occupancy of that building, three spaces, four spaces isn't going to make a whole lot of difference. So in speaking with Mr. Horn and Mr. Rose, we came up with the idea of the, perhaps extending the 500 feet. And I used the online maps that the town provides to get a measurement to the different municipal parking areas that are in, in the vicinity. The town hall is, actually I have it marked down, 820 feet. The park, there's parking space over by the monument, which is 877, as a crow flies. And then, of course, there's also parking next to the superintendent's building. I believe that's municipal parking, too. So that's, but that was a little bit further, but certainly within, well within walking distance. And I do believe that there is ample parking on site for our more elderly members who would need to be, not be walking through town. So basically, I'm here to determine what kind of recommendations you might have for us moving forward and determining what we need to do. Because we, we, I've been in contact with the engineering outfit about the site plan already. I have a meeting on Tuesday. So that's where I'm at. So I'm basically wondering what you guys are thinking.
Barbara?
My comment on the, the attempt at the parking on Summer Street would be that I suspect that that, that's just pretty much lot-ish looking now as compared to paved parking. And I don't know about this, but I would assume that use or parking would be pretty specific as to date and time when you needed. And I don't know, I have no idea. But I, I will tell you, from a butter standpoint, I would be, I would, I don't know that I'd want to see that whole area paved so you could throw some cars in there for a few hours a week. I mean, that's, that's a decision, you know, that maybe what you're looking at is a couple of, trying to get a couple of permanent spaces there closer to the building, and then maybe avoiding the ledge or having temporary parking. I mean, I have no idea. But I, I would say that from a butter standpoint, I would anticipate issues with all of a sudden having that just turned into paving.
Well, it also, in speaking with Lieutenant Connor this afternoon, he expressed that as a, as part of his comments on the, concerning the parking, is that that actual space is too close to the building. It would inhibit fire apparatus. So that's what we're basically kind, and again, because of the square footage of the building, those three spaces is kind of a moot point. We've, we've sent out letters, some of which were included in the packet, to our neighbors. And we were able to achieve a little bit of success. We, four spaces. So, you know, with the anticipated six to eight in the back, that gets us, you know, closer dozen. know, closer dozen.
Okay. Carlos?
I agree with the chairman's observations. I pass through the village frequently on Sundays and I never see a problem. There's always ample spaces available in all parts, all around. I'd be curious to know if the town's ever done an inventory of parking spaces in the downtown area, just to have a number to throw around in my head. I don't know if that's ever been done or not, but it'd be an interesting number to see, but again, I, I've never seen a problem down there. I think sharing spaces is appropriate. I think I agree with what Jim says, bring the people downtown, keep the downtown area vibrant, even on Sundays. Assume you have to have some handicap spaces. I assume those would be the ones near the building.
Right.
Limited to those and the other ones, park where you can throughout the village.
Jim?
My sentiments are all the same as everyone else's. The parking shouldn't be a detriment to this application. People have parked on North Mass Street. There are not lined spaces on North Mass Street, but there's, whenever we have events in town, people park up and down both sides of North Mass Street. When there's, when snow is not in the way and that could be several months of the year, they could use that for parking as well. So I don't think parking should be a detriment to this application.
Paul?
Yeah, I wouldn't say anything more than what everyone else has already said. There's plenty of space, just go, go down Main Street.
You forgot one parking lot, the library parking lot. They're not open on Sunday morning.
Well, we, we received a letter, apparently they're, like Sully's, have, they have allotted some of their space already to another church in town, so. But I, I'm not going to get into that. That's just, that was what we received.
Even though it was parking lot?
I, good question.
It was full on Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was, but the one, the new one they just paved was not.
Well, that's what I'm referring to.
Steve?
I, I agree with the comments so far. I'd be in favor of flexibility with parking here and I don't see real concerns.
Phil?
Oh, I don't see any difference between what goes on currently in the community. As you mentioned before, go by Saturday afternoon or Sunday morning in St. Lawrence, you have the same issue on Union Street, also on Main Street and behind. Do I do have one question? On the diagram, let's say page 10, the X's that are on there along Summer Street, what do, what do those X's represent?
Utility poles.
Okay. All right, no, and the reason-
I believe.
The X's not the catch basins.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, I think that's right because I think there's a utility pole in the paved area right behind Sully's.
Yeah, there is.
Those are typically catch basins off the GIs.
Oh, they are, okay.
You think they're catch basins?
That's usually what that's intended for.
Okay.
Okay, uh, well-
There is a utility pole sticking in the base.
Reason why I ask that question, my recollection is across the street, across Summer Street, is that Sully's?
Mm-hmm.
Adjacent, right outside the church on that side of Summer Street, there's no parking, am I correct?
You're, exactly, from the, from the edge of the parking lot to the corner, yes, yep. No, no on-street parking at that point, yeah.
That's because it's hidden parking against Sully's wall.
The reason, the reason for it was because of the turning for deliveries to Sully's when it was originally instituted.
Yeah, but they already redid the back of Sully's and expanded that back driveway out there and everything else.
Well, I guess the point is, I, the point-
Didn't change anything else. Didn't change the deliveries.
I don't, I, well-
The point, the point I was making before, that, I mean, well, if worse came to worse, there, there might be, there might be a possibility of dealing with, with that issue as far as ordinance to, I don't know what the hours of operation are, I have no idea.
I actually made, if, if anyone is interested, as part of the proposed plan for the building, I actually wrote, figured out all the basic hours and occupancy at the time and usage upstairs and downstairs and I made 18 copies.
Gladly takes them.
Okay.
Carlos?
Just have one additional observation. There's an additional demand for parking now at the season and that is that the Lions Club sells Christmas trees and there's still ample parking down there, so.
Yeah.
They file parking Sully's anyway.
Well, I know, but there's still parking available, I don't see people-
If they had more parking at Sully's, you wouldn't be able to get into the store.
Chair?
Yes?
I'll, I'll let Brian go through this, but I, I'm not sure that the ordinance gives us quite the discretion on parking that we think we have, so the applicant may-
I, I wasn't bringing, I didn't, if you were addressing what I said, I, I didn't-
No, it's with Dr. Geo, just in general, so I, I, maybe they could get together and make sure they don't need a variance for this. I, I'm looking at 7.5, 0.2, it requires that the land area be sufficient and I'm not sure their land area is and I don't know how, I don't know why that's enabled it is. We have to deal with the ordinance we have, not, not the ordinance we wish we had.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from members of the board? Yes, Paul?
Yeah, just, just looking at his, his list of proposed hours, you know, the, the Sunday kind of hours, you know, as we said, shouldn't be an issue, but potentially like some of the Saturday ones could be more of a problem because there is a lot more parking occupied throughout the downtown, like on Saturday.
Right, and the Saturday is something, again, it's, it's a very occasional use. Once a year, we, we, we try to plan a weekend and some members live in Dunbar and some, I live in Goss, I live over in the corner of, on New Boston and Hermsdorf. So carpooling, I mean, this is always, always an option. I don't, I don't know that our, and, and if, yeah, and it really balloons up to, from typically maybe an, an additional 15 to 20 persons, not cars, to, if that's a help.
Any, can we give the applicant any guidance as to, that we would consider, it's not so much a waiver, but it's some kind of process? Jim?
Well, I, I think the consensus of the board appears to be, like, here, that we'd want them to have their handicapped, accessible or elderly version of parking, but that we're not compelling additional parking spaces, but they'd have to work through the procedure in the ordinance and how to obtain that, but we, we don't see that as an issue. And frankly, I'd, I'd rather see landscaping and grass than pavement to the extent they have a choice, use existing pavement downtown for the parking purposes.
Okay.
Other than that, I, and I don't see any reason why, otherwise, I don't see any site plan issues that they've addressed that we need to trip over.
Now, because most of the other comments here from the fire department are really a building issue and can be addressed in that fashion with the fire department or the building department.
Yeah, just, just expand on, on your comment. I mean, I, in here you mentioned about reinstating the, the assembly, the assembly usage and I think as you pointed out, that's basically dealings with Mark Tessier and Lieutenant Connor. I don't think that's anything that this board has any jurisdiction.
You'll have to, so it was a retail store. I've never been in the church, I apologize for that, but inside the building, but what was its use?
It was a vestry shop. It was secondhand clothing.
And how long has that been discontinued?
Oh, a couple of years now, yeah.
It's like a thrift shop.
Yeah.
And how long did that thrift shop operate there?
Uh, probably 10, 10, 10 years.
Yeah, the last meeting, I believe, was 1989. The last, last actual church service that was held on the meeting, in the building was 1989, yeah.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Yes?
I assume, I haven't been in the building for a while and I assume the stained glass is still there?
Yes.
I, I assume that your intent is to leave it?
Yes.
It was an issue at one time about, there was talk about it being removed, raise money. It was an issue, very contentious, so.
Far as I know, there's, there is no intention of, of removing that from, from a number of different angles, one of which, of course, is, is the cost factor.
But there are also names of people-
Exactly, yep.
Who donated.
Donations.
Yep, right.
But that, that was one of the issues that was brought up, it wasn't, it wasn't proper.
As a recommendation, if you have a design professional, look at the building, make sure he keeps in mind the international existing building code and make sure you bring it to Lieutenant Connor's attention because you may get some leeway there.
I had a meeting with, like I said, Mr. Tessier and on Tuesday, that went very well. He had some very good suggestions concerning access for things like wheelchairs and, and how to access up and downstairs too, so.
Required by federal law to do that.
I might, if I could ask a question, what would be the proper procedure then at this point? Would it be to, to get a variance from the zoning, go to the zoning or what?
Brian, Mr. Rose.
Procedure would be to work with Brian.
Okay, I like that, yep.
I think another sit down-
More phone calls, Brian.
No, I think a sit down meeting with Derek and Brian would be ideal because they both come from two different fronts, the zoning administration and the planning and certainly they can lead you in that direction. It's a two-part program. What do I have to do to get site plan approval or site approval?
Right.
And what do I have to do to get building approval for assembly use? So those are two different concerns, two different parties, but you gotta have positive answers for both before you move ahead.
Most likely.
So it's your best judgment, what you gotta do within the building and what you have to do for the site.
Right.
We're telling you that we'll give you some, what I consider to be good, good reason and understanding in terms of your parking issues. I don't know what others might be present and Brian and Derek can help you determine what those are, if any.
Right. Okay.
Can I ask clarification for staff?
Maybe.
Do you want them to go forward to come in with a site plan application or are you, or is the board looking at, they don't see issues and they're willing to waive site plan?
Oh, I think they have to have-
Well, I, I think we'll have to have site plan.
Okay.
But I, but I do believe that they would consider the staff's recommendations as being fruitful and, and would meet the planning requirements of the town.
Next question, about, just about our notification or do you want an engineer drawings?
I would leave that to staff, I think. It's determine how much in content it has to be if there's a minor change in site. It may, it may be a simplified site plan if we're doing engineering articles or engineering structures on the site.
Not the interior.
They want something more substantial.
I would say though, if the board is recommending that no parking be put on the site, then-
With the exception of handicapped and disabled parking.
I think if, if handicapped parking is going to be designed on the site though, then it would have to be engineered.
Um, if that number of people, they only require is two spaces. I-
I just question the wording, Brian, that no parking put on, I think that, I think the site should maximize the available parking. I don't see them tearing up grass and paving as a, to increase it to that jammed up diagram we saw, but I think they should be encouraged to maximize their parking to the best of their ability rather than just say, don't worry about it at all. Do what you can do with what you have. What's there?
Phil?
So, but I, I guess just so that we're all on the same page here, I guess what I'm, I'm hearing though, is as far as engineering, the only thing we really need to have designed is for the parking and for this space to maximize these spaces. I, I mean, I, I don't feel that we need a complete engineered site plan, but I think for the sake of the parking, maybe just that area designed to, to maximize that parking just so we have-
Megan, can I just ask you a question? There's probably not a lot of definitive information on the GIS, is there, topographic wise, because there's only maybe four or five feet in that whole site.
Yeah, we only have two, two and 10 foot contours, so there isn't a big grade change there, you're not going to see a lot.
Yeah, but it does show the improved segments of pavement on the GIS, right? Streets, but there's no onsite and the GIS shows sidewalks, right?
Yes, it should, yeah, I mean, it should show sidewalks, but there aren't any on Summer and then on North Mass on that side, I don't know if there's one off, there's like a gap of gravel.
There is a sidewalk on North Mass.
There is a, a walk, walking surface there, there's also a fire hydrant in the corner. So.
We may could work a off of that plan.
Yeah. Tim?
Well, just to follow up on Phil said, I don't think they need to have an engineer do a full site plan, but they certainly could take an existing plot plan and have a, a surveyor or someone draw, just do an amendment onto the site plan, the plot plan to show where they're going to put it down. That would be, I think that'd be satisfactory.
As long as it's to scale and done properly.
I think to scale so that it meets the requirements for the width and the, the accessible area adjacent to the parking space, you know, just to put it on, on the existing plot plan.
Can we defer to Megan's expertise?
Absolutely.
To work with the staff to make sure that whatever information on there you feel comfortable with in terms of its content and quantity?
Yeah.
And leave it like that? If you tell us there's enough information that you're satisfied with the engineering potential for the site, we'd be happy with it.
Sure.
It's an existing building.
Yeah.
Yeah, around the existing building.
Make it work.
Simple, straightforward. There'll always be a question from some member of the board, probably me, about something in the drawing. Other than that, we'd like to encourage you to write and forward your project.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for coming to see me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We didn't get that on TV.
You say that again, please?
It's good to see you.
Yes.
8:30?
If anybody want a break, so we want to get right into it.
Let's just go. Well, Barbara's already on.
I think this is going to be fairly short, so I don't think we need to necessarily make Jack wait for another.
Okay, Jack, you have the floor.
Okay, I've got a brief thought here. We submitted revised source water protection reports to Brian a week and a half ago and they have been subsequently reviewed by Megan and we've had a meeting with Megan and we're in the process of making revisions to the source water protection plan inventory, the PCS data. I think Megan might even want to talk about some ideas that she has with some of the known contamination sources in the town. But that work can go on independent of the ordinance that we have submitted to the Planning Board and what I have today to give you is just an up-to-date aquifer transmissivity map, which the ordinance would be based on. And luckily through Megan's review, there was a kind of a donut hole in one of the Stratified Drift aquifer locations and we discovered, going back into Granite, that that is really the highest porous area where groundwater flows through Camp Goss Town. So if you're ever looking for an excellent source of water, that's the place to go, right there where that big red donut hole is located. And it is, I believe it does belong to the Goss Town Village precinct, it's in that area. So also-
Do you have a public fountain there?
What?
Is that a good spot for a public fountain?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
It certainly will be. Uh, depends on how deep your well is and your pump and everything. We also talked to Brian and Brian asked us to change the ordinance proposal so that it would fit into section 13 6 of your overlay district requirements. So we did that and we have a revision for the ordinance for you to pass around and I suspect, given your normal protocol, you probably want to review it if you have, have some time and then bring it back to another meeting. Obviously due to the time constraints, you may feel uncomfortable getting an- Obviously, due to the time constraints, you may feel uncomfortable getting on to the public hearing agenda for the town warrant. If that is the case, then, you know, we still would be available to work with the planning board to see this through over the next year, so that you can get it on the next town warrant, two thousand twelve. We realize there's gonna be some education involved in it, it's not an easy ordinance. We don't want it to be onerous on property owners, particularly small business owners. We don't think it's going to be, but we want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. That's pretty much all I had tonight. I will say, in terms of the changes to the ordinance, one of the big changes is under the limits thirteen six point three. We are recommending that you consider adding the six wellhead protection areas. Remember those concentric circles and the, as well as the Gostown Village precincts, wellhead protection area, in addition to the Stratified Drift aquifer, including all the classes of the transmissivity from zero all the way up to greater than six hundred, and that's, uh, feet, squared feet per day, in terms of volume of water in the aquifer. The ordinance, I can go through it real quick if you like, or you can come back and do it another time, but, um, it includes the purpose of a statement, authorities are under the innovative RSA six seventy-four sixteen, and, um, the purpose obviously is to, is, is what I would refer to as being a ounce of prevention versus a pound of cure, because when you have these areas contaminated, the cost for cleanup and restoring the water is astronomical. Yes.
Just one question. Thirteen six four ten. Junkyard. Things like definitions probably should go in the front part of our ordinance, rather than in this section, because I don't want duplicity here, and we have a definition of a junkyard in one spot, and a new definition of a junkyard here.
Well, but, but we'd have to make sure that they're consistent, and-
Yes.
If our ordinance, the usual definition, many of the definitions are so we can define a permitted use. That's a different function than defining something so you exclude its use. It's, it's, you, they may be the same, but they may be conceptually different, so I'd be careful if you just throw them all in the beginning of the, into one definitional section when they're serving different purposes.
I just wanna make sure that we don't get caught, well, we'll use this definition because it benefits us, we won't use the other one.
But as long as you define that these definitions apply only to this section.
Yeah.
You're okay, and-
Then we need to add a little sentence where it starts definitions and say that it applies only to this section-
And that would be, and then you can say on the general definition, unless otherwise defined, the following words will have the meaning in this ordinance, so then you can carve out the use of it here.
Because the first thing that a lawyer looks for is deviations in wording.
First thing we look for is a fee deposit, and then a statement. You, you did raise a good question about junkyards, because in, in other towns I've worked with, you've heard of green yards? And, um, you may want to include definitions for green yards in your, in your ordinance, so that, that helps to encourage that sort of use. And you can then grant green yards a little bit, uh, greater benefits in the ordinance.
So what is a green yard?
Thank you, Lo.
That follows under the DES definition. It's one that the operator and the owner of the, of the salvage yard or junkyard has complied with some of the best management practices that DES, they've demonstrated compliance.
But it's a junkyard.
It's still a junkyard, but it's, it's considered a green yard, it's because they've made suitable steps and efforts.
It's a clean junkyard.
It's a junkyard.
Junkyard.
Yes, it's very improved.
To make everybody feel good.
Well, they, they basically, they, they operate to certain standards.
Yes.
Could, could Jack work us through the rest of this while he's on the roll?
Yeah, uh, the application of the ordinance, um, the applicability is that, um, all the uses in the groundwater conservation district would be allowed, except for those exemptions under section, and that should read thirteen point six eleven under thirteen six point five. The exemptions, if we could turn to that section real quick, include a private residence, so single-family dwelling owners are not subject to the ordinance. Any business or facility that, where they have regulated substances are not stored in five-gallon containers or more are exempt from the ordinance. So, uh, what that means is, uh, we, the ordinance tries to encourage small business owners to make sure that they have their regulated substances in five-gallon containers or greater. That way, they would then not be subject to the ordinance. Does that make sense? Uh, any business or facility where regulated substances are not stored in containers with a capacity of five gallons or more is exempt from the performance standards of the ordinance.
Not stored.
Not stored.
Shouldn't be stored.
It says are not stored.
Are not stored in containers.
What does thirteen six six four stand, say? All regulated substances?
It says with a capacity of five gallons or more.
Yeah, with five gallons or more. I think that's kind of a new change under the model ordinance, let me grab that real quick.
Regulated.
Right, I don't think that's a current question.
This was just revised this April.
What constitutes-
It says, uh, any business or facility where regulated substances are stored in containers, uh, it should say are stored. That's a mistake in our ordinance.
It's just a defined term.
What's the section of again?
It's section, uh-
Thirteen six eleven two.
Yes, thank you. So where it says not should be are, just take out the word not. So any business or facility where regulated substances are stored in containers with a capacity of five gallons or more are exempt from the standards.
Five gallons or less.
If, 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 the negative, if it's five gallons or more, it's, it's, it's written correctly.
Yeah.
I think it's right.
But, but, but the other way it's twisted, sounds better. It's not, the way it's written here is more like a double negative.
We're saying you can't store anything greater than five gallons.
Unless it's regulated, in which case it's met other conditions.
None of us have anything more than five gallons in our house.
So that needs to be clarified, nobody's gonna figure it out at twenty-nine and nine.
I've got it right here, 'cause the, actually, it is, it should read with a capacity of less than five gallons.
Right.
Right.
I like that better than the negative.
Five gallons or less, right.
Yeah. So if we could probably change-
Or more, it should, should read or less. Or less.
No, less than five gallons.
You take out the not.
Take out the word not.
Take out the not and add or less. Took out the not, and then took out, put out the word less, what says more.
So it reads, any business or facility where regulated substances are stored in containers with a capacity of less than five gallons is exempt. I'm glad we went through this. The other, all of the heating fuels for a typical, typical use, emergency propane indoors, all of those types of fuels are exempt from the ordinance. Storage of motor fuels in tanks and vehicles are exempt, except, uh, when they're enabled under the performance standard, where there's exchange of fuels on a site. Storage and use of office supplies, temporary storage of construction materials, the sale, transport, use of pesticides, and household hazardous waste, all of those are exempt, except on where they apply from the, um, performance standards. And let's go back to the performance standards, they're under section thirteen six point six.
Is there medical supplies and prescriptions captured in here somewhere to, to store?
Yeah, uh, pharmaceuticals-
Pharmaceuticals, that's the word I'm looking for.
Yeah, pharmaceuticals, um, are not a regulated substance in this ordinance. They are-
Become, as you know, a bigger and bigger issue.
Become a very big issue, all the time, and I, Megan and I talked about, the, the town of Derry is doing some really interesting things in this. They're doing a, uh, programs where they have a throwaway program, where they offer residents to come in and where they have old pharmaceuticals to actually throw them in a controlled area, and then they take them out and dispose of them. And so they educate, do an educational program to help encourage people within the community to get rid of their pharmaceuticals, you know, during a process like that. However, this ordinance doesn't really pertain to pharmaceuticals. It's a good, it's a good point, good question.
Well, yeah, it seems as though there should be some sort of prohibition craft to speak to that.
Yeah, um, it's not a regulated substance, because it's not like a hazardous-
I understand, but I, I have a lot more concern with large amounts of pharmaceuticals and medical waste than I do with snow dumps, to be honest with you.
Sure, yeah.
In the groundwater protection area.
Yeah, well, I agree with you on that. Particularly those that, you know, treatment, because, situation, because the treatment programs don't always pick it up, the pharmaceuticals. They're not all tested. But we're talking about regulating, you know, groundwater around a well and trying to protect that well and the drinking water supply from mainly contaminants that would seep down into the ground, not being, you know, thrown or discharged down a toilet or sink, although they could end up into some grease traps with stormwater system, which could then eventually end up in a stream or river and then flow down into the groundwater, so it's cyclical.
But I'm thinking more about, I don't, and I don't know how this would occur, but collecting those materials in a location, in quantity, to be transferred for proper disposal, you know, whatever. Anyways, I don't think you'd spend a lot of time-
Yeah, it would be like a household hazardous waste collection.
Yeah, I don't wanna spend a lot of time, it just raises the issue.
And, and, and we certainly could, um, work with Megan and provide to get, uh, the town some information as to what they're doing in Derry on this. It's kind of innovative in this state. So, the performance standards, there's twelve of them, and, uh, they start there on thirteen point six point six, and basically, for any use, the trigger is for any use that will render impervious more than fifteen percent or more than two thousand five hundred square feet of any lot, a stormwater management plan must be prepared, submitted to the planning board. That is basically the key trigger for the performance standards, so that as any use in these, in this zone, if they're going to pave their lot greater than fifteen percent or two thousand five hundred square feet, then they would need to submit a stormwater management plan. Another question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This, this percentage looks at a particular activity, so if I come in and I'm going to do more than fifteen percent of my lot, what if I'm gonna do fourteen percent, I'm exempt, right? And the next year I do fourteen percent, and I'm exempt.
Or more than twenty-five hundred square feet, there's a caveat in there.
But is that a one-time, or is it, is it a, um, is it, is it cumulative? So that if, at any time, you, if the aggregate of, uh, use exceeds this amount, you have to come in. It's a good question. I'll have to find that out, I don't know.
Well, you would, you would assume, I think, that if, if you had one first time that has been stabilized or whatever, before you go to the next one, but I'll let Carlos and Tim answer those. Carlos?
I, I more had procedural concern, I mean, our first public hearing on zoning ordinance is a week from tonight, and we're seeing that, I, I don't know how we're gonna be ready for prime time with this for the sixteenth, so what I'd like to do is take this and have some time to digest it, make some comments, because, you know, like I say, I don't think this is gonna happen this year, I think it's admirable, I think we need to do it, but, I mean, I, I just don't see that we've got enough time, we've only got one week between our first hearing.
And the other thing is, we probably have at least three public agencies that probably would like to review this also, or value the Quater District.
Yes.
Or the Village District, Grassmere, I don't know if any of those folks weigh in on this, and I've talked to Tim, and Tim has called me and talked about it.
Oh, I got, I got something to say about that before we're all done. Yeah, I appreciate, appreciate Jack's work, and I think, like I say, I think it's an admirable goal and something that the, the community needs to do, but as far as-
Plus the fire department chief.
Trying to digest it all tonight.
So we're not gonna get it done for next week, so.
Well, and, and I just wanna put out there, too, that, that the first public hearing is not the last public hearing. We are planning to put it on the second public hearing, the one in January as well, so.
But the second one could, you can't do substantive changes, right, you can only do-
We have time after that to have a third one if we need one. You'd have to have a subsequent hearing after it makes substantive changes.
You couldn't do it with the two-hearing format, right?
I'm gonna go Phil first, Tim.
Just, uh, maybe I, I completely missed it, but I know the other maps that we talked about, I know the map that you mentioned with the circles for the wellhead protection areas. I guess the question though, what I'm looking at here, and, uh, how do, does a person know if their lot is part of the, this overlay district affects their lots? How, how do we, how do we know that?
Well, it's gonna be, and shown on a map as part of the ordinance, and the map would be at the planning department office, probably posted on the town website.
We'll get the GIS layers in here as well, and we can incorporate that into the GIS.
Well, I, I guess the concern that I have, okay, I mean, I would wanna make sure that it's, it's fairly easy for a person to determine or go through a process to find out. I mean, we, we don't wanna have public hearings, and then a person asks if I'm in it, and then we are here stumbling, trying to figure out, is he or isn't he, is half of his lot in it, or, or, or?
Yeah, the, the question about whether their lot is split by the boundary of the aquifer typically, and I, there's a section in the ordinance here that allows the planning board to, um, in a development proposal situation, a site plan that would come before you or a conditional use permit, to have a hydrogeological study done to, to verify whether the actual, uh, lot is within the aquifer now, if it's right upon the long, the edge of the boundary. So it's a interpretation question that would be resolved through further study, more detailed study. These, these, these maps only go down to a certain resolution on a lot, and they're never gonna be exact in terms of the boundary, uh, and, and Megan can explain it a little better than I can, but the soil characteristics are all gonna be a little different, the porosity of the soil, it's all a little different when you get down to the site level and the depth to the groundwater is gonna vary, so.
I guess so as a follow-up on my question, then. As you progress this down through the GIS, and we bring these down to the individual lots.
Right.
That's gonna be difficult for us to, a property owner comes in and I wanna see my lot, and we get it on a GIS, are we gonna be able to know if, is that gonna be able to go down onto his lot?
Yeah, it, it'll show down to the lot level on the GIS layer, but the exact boundary is just an approximation of the aquifer.
Who's responsible for determining that boundary then? I guess if the town is going to pass this ordinance.
Yeah.
Are we now the town responsible to determine where the boundary is, or is it property owner responsible?
The town is not responsible for the boundary, because it's relying on the scientific study that was done through the, uh, US Geological Survey and the Department of Environmental Services Geological Branch. They, um, updated the survey information of the aquifers in the region. They updated the survey information of the aquifers in the region, and they used well logged data to kind of define and enhance the boundaries.
But I guess the question Phil is, is going at, if an applicant comes in to do something before this board, and somebody says, wait a minute, aren't you part of the groundwater overlay district? And the applicant says, no, I'm not.
Right. Somebody has to referee.
Who referee, how do you referee that?
Well, uh, you would look at the map and say.
Yeah, but then, okay, I'm on this map, but that's not the section I'm on, and that's not detailed, and you have no boundaries, and I say my building is outside of that. Tim has had his hand up for a long time.
He's waving at me. Tim?
While I appreciate all the work that goes into this from Jack and the staff at the Southern New Hampshire Planning, I think this thing is much too, um, it's too complicated for us to even be putting on the warrant for this, this upcoming vote. It's just sixteen, thirteen six six one about the impervious service of fifteen percent or more than twenty-five hundred square feet of any lot is, it's much too restrictive. I mean, you could have twenty-five hundred square feet of asphalt paving just on a normal driveway.
Yeah, but that's an example, residential lots are an example, right?
Yes.
Because I brought that up to them, I, I misinterpreted that thinking just what you said.
Well, that's right, what I was thinking.
That was a concern, I discussed that with Jack, and if you look under the exemptions, I believe the first.
Okay, I do, I do remember that, you are.
Any private residence is exempt from all performance standards.
So, so what's, so what are we, what are we doing here? How many businesses are down in the overlay district down there?
Quite a few.
Well, I, I'm, I'm still.
The entire downtown.
I'm not done yet. I, I still think that we are, this is much too complicated a document to be digested and be brought forth for a vote this year. I think this should be delayed, at least till the next vote. And then the next topic that has come up is that I received a call from the commissioner of the water precinct, and they are literally up in arms that we are trying to usurp their authority by telling them what they're going to be doing and all this to the planning board. I mean, I think the water department, the village water precinct should have been here from day one to base any concerns they may have had. And I don't think this planning board has any authority to decide what goes on or doesn't go on on the water precinct property.
Are you referring to their, um, land around the reservoir?
All this land right here that, that you show in blue and red is all village water precinct property. The land around the reservoir also belongs to them. And I think that in, in my discussions with the chairman of the commission is that they already have all of their own plans in place for contamination and, and active plans to prevent or, or control something if it should happen. And for us to put another set of regulations to, to overlay what they have in place, we, we are either going to create redundant regulations or we're going to have conflicting regulations. So I think the water precinct needs to be, as much a part of this as this planning board needs to be a part of this.
Well, we, we agree with you on that, and we would certainly have.
I mean, have, have you been with them and?
We haven't had a chance to present this to them. We had a meeting with them just to talk about an interconnection.
Okay.
That's all at this point.
Well, I'm, I'm going to renew my statement that I think this is premature for us to even be putting on the town warrant this year.
I think the pro, just if I can, with the board chair's permission, follow up on Tim. I think all, all it's going to need is one public hearing where somebody from the water precinct comes up and says, nobody consulted us in connection with what's before you, and it's going to be over.
They didn't, and we have not consulted them.
And it doesn't matter whether you consult them between now and next week. That's going to be a problem.
And they are a enterprise fund, self-sustaining entity, which is.
Guaranteed by the town.
They have their own rules and regulations, and they need to be an integral part of whatever happens with the overlay district. They need to be in, in the mix from the very start.
You can pull us at the, at that public hearing, you can pull it off.
Well.
And then if you do delay to next year, I suggest you do it early on and get everyone in, and maybe if you know the businesses it impacts, notify them as well.
Well, you know, we're not imposed to meeting with them and going over this with them and delaying it, but, um, you know, we agree with you that we want to work with the precinct.
Absolutely. And I don't want to step on their toes either. I mean, they, they do a good job for what they do, and I, I, I respect them for what they do.
Yeah.
One of the things that, it covers all of our downtown and all of Mastro, all of Penardra.
Yes.
Mastro.
Yes, Phil? I, I, I guess this is a follow-up on the question that I asked earlier about who determines whether they're in it. And, and, you know, I, I'm looking at this, I'm looking, I, I tend to look at some of these issues more on the enforcement being on board of selectmen, dealing with these issues. And I guess some of the restrictions, some, some of the things that are in here as far as how items are stored, what's stored, the regulations of it. If I don't know if my property is in the zone, I don't know if I'm, I come underneath that. And I guess if you, as we always have neighbors that have issues, you get a phone call to, let's say, code enforcement. Okay, so-and-so is storing this on a certain place, okay, on their property, and it's in violation of, of this. Who determines whether or not, and that, that's why I asked that. Now, if this person, if the property owner is told that they're in violation because they're in this here, and the vi, the property owner says that he's not, I mean, is this a case that you're guilty because we are accusing you, we're telling you that you're, you, you're in that and you have to prove that you're not? Or is it that we say that you're in it and we have to prove that you're in it?
Just like any other zoning regulation. It's just your, code enforcement, yeah, makes a determination whether your property is in the zone or not, just like any other zone.
I'm sure this map could be able to zoom down on.
Yes, it can, and, you know, we could enlarge it to show how it would fall within all the lot lines.
Megan?
I think maybe what we need to do is, um, like, these circles that are on here are radiuses based on, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, the radius is based on, I think, DES's kind of recommendation about the pumping volume, and so based on the pumping volume of the well, it's a certain radius. Now, again, as Jack said, that's kind of just a, a starting point. It's a simplistic way to create a wellhead protection area. There are more advanced ways to do it that are, can be costly if you go hire, you know, uh, you know, an engineer to do it or whatnot. We could possibly find a happy medium, not to like add work to my plate, but I'm just thinking of a way to like, we could find a happy medium where we could use our two and ten foot contours and take the radius and overlay that into, say, AutoCAD, and then look at all the contours in that area, and everything that drains down toward the well is now a more defined area. So it's not just a circle, we'll start with a circle, and then over this next year, it sounds like, you know, we're not ready, and, and I agree. So over the next year, we can work to define that more. So, like, if you look at the really large circle for the village water precinct's well, it has an odd shaped boundary because it's, it's based on contours. It's based on the area that drains down toward the well. And we could do that with all these other areas also, based on our two and ten foot contours. I think that would give us a more accurate zone so that I could work with Derek and we could confidently say, this is all draining down to this well. You are in the radius, and yes, it's all draining, you know, we could define an area a little better, I think.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if you have a community well based upon the volume pumped per day, isn't there, there's a state required protective well radius for that community well? Is that what you've described here on that map?
No, this is beyond that. This is just, that's the seventy-five foot radius.
No, no, community wells.
Yeah.
If, if greater volumes have greater protective radii.
Yeah, every well has to have a seventy-five foot well radii around it.
That's a, that's a personal.
An individual well.
But a community, a community well would go regulated differently.
Seven hundred feet.
And is that what you represent on these community wells?
Yeah, what we're trying to represent is that area beyond the seventy-five feet to the limit of contribution, that contour where the water starts draining down into the well.
I understand that, but you had large diameter circles around these wells. And it's, and they were different sizes.
Right.
And was that size regulated by the volume of water they were pumping?
Yes, absolutely.
And that's governed by the state of New Hampshire?
That, the pumping levels are, yes.
Pumping levels, but also the protective radius.
The radius are agreed to by the state. But there's no protections beyond the sanitary radius in the wellhead protection area.
Okay.
That's why we're here.
Yes, Megan?
There's two different radii, the seventy-five foot is a sanitary, you know, no septics within the sanitary protective radius. You may be right that with a larger, more commercial or, you know, larger public system, the sanitary radius may be more than seventy-five, but it feels like we're nowhere near this thousand to four thousand foot radius.
Right, it's big.
This is a radius to protect the water draining down to the area, not just things within the sanitary protective zone. I mean, we can look into that, but I think this goes beyond what you might be talking about, to protect a larger area that all drains down toward.
I'm, I'm just asking, are these community wells that we're talking about?
Yes, community wells.
They're already regulated by the state, if I'm not mistaken.
Absolutely.
Those are already regulated by the state of New Hampshire.
There's, that's where the redundancy came in that I mentioned. We may be creating ordinances that are going to be in conflict with what, what they're already dealing with.
Well, we're looking at protecting the areas around the wells, outside the sanitary radius.
Complication is not necessary. Because if it's already regulated by some other agency, we don't want to be there, because if they change their rules, we're done in.
Well, but, but isn't the point that if we want to have local regulations, we, we need to do it ourselves, because we, we can't rely on the state to enforce land use in Gostown. So sure, if somebody else is doing it, but it only works if they in fact do it. You have the efficiency of the DES and catching violations. Um, this, this is all a land use tool.
I understand that, I just don't want to cross any swords with everybody.
Sure.
Megan?
Um, I had, uh, Jack had sent me a few DES fact sheets, and on this one that I'm looking at, it talks about the difference between, well, it's talking about the sanitary protective radius, and it lists a whole table, zero to seven hundred and fifty gallons is your seventy-five foot radius. The largest one listed on here is over a hundred and forty-four thousand gallons is a four hundred foot radius. That's the largest sanitary protective radius. And again, what we're talking about is wellhead protection areas from over a thousand to almost four thousand foot radii. So you're right that it goes above seventy-five, but it appears based on DES, and it lists, it references, you know, EMV DW three oh one oh six, that's, you know, the state law there. It lists up to four hundred feet only. So I believe that's what's regulated by DES, only to that point. And it says that, um, under the current law, it must be controlled by the water supplier through ownership or easement. So again, the town doesn't get involved, it's with the case.
There's a homeowners association, they all own the open space developments is where these, these community wells are.
Well, this is the town trying to protect beyond that zone, because it sounds like.
How can you, how can you impact in a butter to that, that well? If, if in fact that radius extends beyond the, the planned development and the community well is originally designed and now impacts on a butter? Is that fair?
Again, it, it, the residential properties are exempt from this.
Again, this is really focused on those uses that are storing regulated substances. Uh, there could be gas stations.
I understand that, but the average citizen doesn't own a gas station, he doesn't own a.
But the average citizen isn't impacted, is the point, in that the residences are exempt. I think there are a lot of other issues that have come up, but.
For instance, say an area is now residential, but in the future it gets rezoned. Now it's rezoned, now there's other uses that can be there. If this was in place, it would protect certain uses from going in that. I, I'm just thinking ahead, do you know what I mean, of, you know? I think, like you said, some of these circles, like this one way up, um, I don't know, off of, um.
Tiberet Hill Road?
Tiberet Hill Road. I, I can't see that anybody in there is going to be impacted, it's all residential, so they're all going to be exempt slightly from that entire area. But you can see, I don't know if you can see on one of your maps, on map two, there is one PCS, which means a potential contamination site, which, um, I believe is, it's, um, the company that's right on Gostown back road, um, Elm Street near us. He has an office up there, um, Quadrant Construction, okay? So that is like one of these things that we're looking at as, as a potential contamination, that the town needs to stay on top of and make sure nothing's going on that could be an issue. And if so, this whole ordinance seems to be, it, it's the town taking on a lot of responsibility. I guess it's, one, do we care enough to protect the public water supplies? And if we do, then we're writing this ordinance, and we actually, it sounds like, what, what I read is, we have to do the management of it. We have to, if we find, you know, we do these windshield surveys, whether I do it with my interns or however it works, it, it seems like we are taking on a lot of responsibility, and we have to decide if we want to do that. But we would do these windshield surveys and things like that and see if there's any potential problems. I'd have to work with Brian and we, or Derek, and we may have to send out annual letters to a few properties if we do have concerns, and maybe get permission to go on their property and walk. And, you know, again, you're just trying to prevent, you know, it's, what do you call it? Hazardous mitigation, you're trying to prevent a problem, you know?
Trying to prevent some of the things that exist in town right now. Yes, Barbara?
A couple of members of the board have felt this is too much to go on for next week. At the beginning of this meeting, I didn't think so, I now think so. I think there are issues in regards to making sure that the water precinct regulations that currently exist for wellhead protection, which has been done consistent with this. I don't see particularly a lot of issues with this, because this is primarily residential. A lot of these areas are, like, Grasmere, which is Manchester, and it's, a lot of it is residential. But as Megan points out, this is another ordinance that the town needs to support. And that's a huge issue, and that question is not going to be solved within the public hearing timeframe. It's just not. I'm inclined to let this go for now.
If the public hearing, is that the official time to withdraw?
It's going to advertise, it's on.
So you have to just either, you vote not to put it on the warrant, basically.
You can withdraw, and then for the second public hearing, you don't have to advertise it? Just advertise the other one that you have?
Yes, Megan. Yes, Megan?
I guess I'd like to know, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it not being ready for next week, because I do agree there's a lot more we could do to have it, um, you know, be more of a user friendly and, and, you know, resident friendly, so they understand it. Would it be appropriate to come back in front of the board in a couple of months when we have, you know, a month or two, and we have a little more, just to stay on top of it? I don't want to just let this go for months and months and come back next summer. Because what, part, you know, I feel bad, because part of this, I just dove into all of this and, and, and got Jack all kinds of comments, and we've had some meetings, but several of them I couldn't attend, it was just a crazy summer, and I didn't have the time to evolve to it.
Yeah, really, have that summer go for you, baby.
So, you know, I feel bad, because now I'm getting into it and I have lots of questions, because I'm trying to wrap my, my head around all of it. So maybe we kind of come back in a month or two, and, you know, after the holidays are over and we have time to make some adjustments and, you know, make sure you guys are still on board with us.
Bring in the precinct as well.
Yes, and that, that was.
But based upon our recent agendas, I would think you'd have the opportunity, whenever you would like, to come back before the board for.
Updates.
Excuse me?
For an update.
For updates or whatever, so that, so that early on we feel very well prepared for whatever would go on to the town warrant for a vote.
And, and Jack, if, in that regards, I don't know that you need to come to the public hearing. I mean, we can, you know, you don't need to come to the public hearing, and you don't, for updates, you don't need to be coming back to our evening meetings. If there's something going on, to come back, depending on what the status is, you know, between myself as a rep or Carl as the alternate with Megan and the chair, you know, we'll get the issue before the board.
But we would like to definitely, when it's all pulled together and updated, schedule and educational.
Well, and I, I'd sort of like to see sort of a little explanation of it next week at the public hearing, so that the. so that the reason that it's on is at least put out there, but that's based on the current-
I think it needs-
Some questions in regards to making sure it's consistent with other ordinances, we're making the decision to pull it. But I mean, I'd like to make a public statement as to the purpose and what it's attempting to do.
Would you like us to submit a letter to the planning board chairman?
I think it, send it to Brian Planner, just a one page, one paragraph.
And that's why-
I was saying that we're working on this, a particular program for a, uh, the, uh, for a zoning ordinance for groundwater resource conservation.
Okay.
Don't say district, just groundwater resource conservation, because that sounds like a program versus a set place of time and happening. And so people become aware of those things, and they have, and they will have opportunity to ask questions and whatever. Tim?
Maybe even we could, this may be the wrong thing to do. Maybe we could encourage the public to submit written comments for, for discussion prior to public hearings so that things that would come up at a public hearing could possibly get ironed out prior to even getting to a public hearing.
And, and I see no reason why we shouldn't allow a village district representative to be here to board and just say a few words. I don't, I have no problem with that either, in particular. Because we get to feel that they're in confidence and they're in agreement when they make that kind of presentation, and you have a logical reason to report that. And if there's something that's happened, and there's something that's there behind also.
Can you just include in that the distinction between the sanitary protective area and essentially the inflow area that we're talking about with this? Because people would think that we're already dealing with it, and this is actually beyond that.
When you do this later, like, when we did a, like, a zoning district change, we, and we knew the areas, do you want us to try and notify the pub? We didn't do like a certified mail. We just kind of know-
I don't even, let's not even, no.
There's, there's too many letters.
That'd be too many, okay.
We're not even gonna go there right now.
But right now, it's too large.
Well, we appreciate this, because we realize this is an all, whole new thing, and, uh, we know it's gonna take some time to work through. We're not, we're not pushing it.
It comes up in conversation, no matter what you're talking about.
It is important.
Yeah, I'm talking about it all the time. Every day I'm talking about these expanded zones around wells.
You're driving us nuts.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. So, we can, this will be on the agenda. We'll address it appropriately on our first meeting on December third, uh-
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Um, I have just one further point.
I have, I have one too before.
Um, I, I, I went to a community development, development block grant writing workshop. And I think this town is missing some opportunities here in, in applying for some of these grants for either planning purposes, uh, for, say, doing a utility expansion, for commercial development, or whatever it is that affects our master plan. They, they won't give you a master planning grants, but you can write these through either, um, Ryan or Derek, if it's zoning, or, or, uh, Ryan if it's planning, and it's done through the community, done through the town. It's authorized by the Board of Selectmen.
What type of grant money is available to do what types of things?
Well, they have a, a fund of ten million dollars twice a year. They primarily have been doing housing, because no one else ever applies for the other grants that are out there. And I didn't know all of them until I went to this grant writing seminar.
Well, we did, we did apply for, um, the improvements over at the Medford, Medford, uh, not Medford Village of Glen Falls, I believe it was, where they're, um, they're septics.
And where, what's the status of that? Do you know?
Oh, it, that was all approved.
Yeah. So it, it's sponsored by the Selectmen. A private individual can be a sub-recipient of this grant money too. So it could be a business. If it provides economic development is another aspect of these grants. So, um, I was suggesting, I wrote a letter back through, um, EDC suggesting that, that we get some, uh, venue with a Board of Selectmen to, to see if we can't pursue some of these things because there's the new ground, new, the new round is due January thirty-first of applications.
Boy, does one that comes right to mind.
Well, the extension of sewer and water and gas to one fourteen, we can get a state fund, a funded planning grant to see how and what we could do and where and when.
If they could get the high flow gas from the one fourteen, one fourteen intersection down towards the Tiff District area that was proposed, I think it would make a whole different attitude toward developers buying land and developing in the-
It's just another avenue to provide encouragement for things to happen.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I agree. There's lots and lots of grant money available out there. The communities who are successful at getting grant money, it's because they either have a grant writer on staff or they contract with a professional grant writer. I mean, even at the state level, you can't keep up with the various pots of money, the, 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 uh, schedules, the calendars that you need to meet, the timing, uh, the, the form that they need to comply with and all that stuff. I mean, you really need, and we've talked about that at a charrette here in Gostown before. What was one of the important things we should do? We should look at getting a person who's dedicated to writing grants because you can't take a planner. He's tied up with so many other things. Grant writing is, it's difficult. It's an art. It's time consuming.
And it pays for itself in the long run.
It sure does.
That's why I went to the seminar. But anyways, the Selectmen already have a CCR number, so there's no definitive action the Board of Selectmen have to make other than to agree to participate and support a grant application. Period.
And we do apply for many, many grants, and we receive, have received many, many grants.
So, um, there, there are some programs for economic development that are pretty substantial. You could take a business downtown here and support him.
There's a tremendous amount of grants that were done for the, um, water pro, uh, water project down in, uh, Lynchville Park. This is every, so that you're aware of, and there's been the planning department, Derek and both Mark have been very, very, the planning department's been extremely busy working down there. Unbelievable amount of work.
I'm not saying they haven't been.
I'm just, I'm just-
I'm not either, but there's more out there. That's the point.
Oh, yeah. There, there was just another opportunity that I came across, and I did send it back in a piece of correspondence to a group of people via email. Tim?
Through the CIP process, we're aware of grants for a lot of things. Uh, the fire chief wrote grants for seven hundred and something thousand dollars for the tower truck. We never would've got that truck without the grant. We've gotten grants and applied for grants for the communication upgrades through the police, police and fire. We got, uh, a grant for the generator for the police station, I believe, as well. So our public servants are doing their work. They're getting, they're doing it, but they're not professional grant writers.
I'm not saying they're not. I'm just, this is another opportunity.
We've got three rail trail grants that we're working on currently, and we've got two historic district commission grants that we're also working on. And there's a CMAC grant that I'm actually going to a presentation tomorrow about that we're trying to get. So, I mean, it's, it's definitely on the forefront, but Colas is right. I mean, it, it's a time consuming thing, and getting into too many of them can be a detriment and can, can drag you down because it does take a lot of time and a lot of effort. So I just want the board to be cognizant of that fact as well, and-
I, 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 I agree.
Hiring a grant person would be awesome. That's all I'm gonna say.
Every, every department in the town would benefit, and the taxpayers in the town would pay big time.
Oh, I don't doubt that. I don't, I don't doubt it at all, but the reason it intrigued me is the grant application process for CBDG is all online now. You form a record for a particular project, uh, he, he can write on it. A grant writer can write information on it and add to it, so it's a team effort. The Selectmen can write into it, but the Selectmen are the ones that authorize it.
Yeah, yeah.
They're the only ones that can authorize in this community any grant application. So, um-
And actually, the, uh, Upparel, that project included a, a community block development grant.
So it is another opportunity, but you had some, somebody had something else you wanted to bring up.
I did. I wanted to share an experience Tuesday night. I was at the ZBA meeting. Um, and we talked about this before, the lack of communication between ZBA and the planning board. This was particularly disturbing. It was, I was there as a representative of Conservation Commission because it was a four lot subdivision, and they were talking about the wetland setback, you know, the-
Wallace Road.
Uh, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um- I know the one.
Two, two issues they were looking for variances for. One was for roadway frontage. And I had problems with that because what they were doing, and I'm sure they approved these, I didn't stay at the end of the meeting. I couldn't hear what action they took on that. I, I stayed long enough for the wetland setback one. But there, the four lot subdivision had two lots that were extreme flag lots, and I mean long skinny necks to get back to where the buildable land was, and we typically don't like to see those. It also forced them to have a shared driveway, which we don't like to see. And I select say, I didn't see, I wasn't there for the action they took, but I'll bet you they granted that variance, which flies in the face of what we try and do as we look at it from a planning perspective.
Also looking for a wetland setback.
Well, and that's the second one. I want to talk about that one as well.
Yeah, I, I read that.
They, they were looking for, and our ordinance is very clear. It talks about if you want relief from the outer fifty feet, there's a procedure that comes, that you got a wetland scientist, they prepare a report, they give it to the CONCOM for time to review it. They make a recommendation to the planning board to grant the relief. Tony Martz, the attorney for the property owners, said, no, no, I want a variance from that whole section. And I can ask for a variance for that whole section, and I'm here demanding a variance from that whole section. And if you don't give it to me, we're gonna end up in court, and it's gonna cost everybody a lot of money, and blah, da, blah, da, blah, all the crap we hear at the same. So, you know, it's, there's a real disconnect here, is, is my point.
Well, can I ask, does anybody know what the action was? Because I'm more than ready to make a motion to reconsider another ZBA decision, depending on what happened.
Well, I, uh, on the, relative to the wetland setback, they decided that they weren't going to take action on it, and they were gonna allow the planning board to take, but they were this close. I mean, it was a three-two vote, and, um-
And what happened with the flag lots? Anybody know?
I, I don't know, but I-
We have a meeting next week that's within the term period.
I know they denied the variance for the well. That I don't know.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't allow that. They didn't allow it. They basically said, go to the planning board for, for that.
Although they were really sure.
But I don't remember on the flag lot issue, I don't remember Derek talking about that. They probably, I don't know.
I didn't think either one went for it, but- Huh? They didn't approve it. That's why I thought, when I asked her, he said they didn't approve it, so I won't say they approved it.
I was under the impression that the-
Thank you.
I was under the impression that the only way you- I was under the impression the only way to get relief from that outer fifty foot wetland setback was to go through the process through the planning board. I did not know the, the zoning board of appeals could grant an exemption for the whole thing.
You can appeal for a variance, anything within the zoning ordinance, including definitions.
Right, as long as you meet the five prime-
Yes.
I think the ZBA agreed with-
One, the one is financial.
I think they agreed with you that it had to come to planning.
Well, yeah, eventually. It wasn't easy.
Because I read that. I read that in the notice, and I, I said, they can't give that relief. It's not, it's a planning board decision.
That's why I think there needs to be better communication. I mean, just a case in point, when we come here, I see people bring their zoning ordinance with them. You go to a ZBA meeting, they don't have the drilling regulations with them. You know, they're trying to talk about all these aspects of the subdivision plan. I'm saying, wait a minute, these are all planning issues. If, if this is the action you're gonna take, why don't you just approve the subdivision right here at the ZBA level and let the planning board go home?
When I went to, when I went to the ZBA on the little fiasco last year, the only book they looked at was this.
Yeah.
Maybe when we get the email, not necessarily paper, you could include a copy when the ZBA minutes become available for us. Uh, just on the email copy. I mean, because we, and that way, those of us who think, when I open those, I might, you know, this, I bring-
We can, yeah, we can send them. I'm, they just meant last Tuesday.
No, no, no. I'm just saying in the future, because this is not the first, you know, now we're, I think, if we're more on top of it, we're realizing there are a lot of things coming before there that maybe we would have, expectations would be handled differently. And maybe the minutes should just, we should just get them so we can take a look at them, and so if something comes up, then we know what the result was, rather than just a discussion.
I think the study is, Brian, if the members of the planning board, including altements and staff, should receive a copy of the ZBA agendas. And the only way you know is if you go online, whatever. And I think the agendas need to go to the planning board members as a mailing, technically legal, to do so. And vice versa. I think the zoning board should be given a copy of our agendas, so they can't say, we don't know what you're doing. We can't say, we don't know what they're doing, because as a public entity, you have a right to go and speak at a ZBA if you think there's something, even if as a member of the planning board. You can go speak to a citizen, Joe, as far as I know.
They do get it. Conservation gets an email a lot, the agendas.
While we're talking about it, why don't we get the conservation's agendas?
Okay. I mean, if you get online and get them all, I mean, you can go online. They're there all the time. I was just saying that the minutes when they become available to send those out, because then when something comes up, we'll know.
They're posted on the website as soon as they're available.
If you'd like us to email the agendas to you, I don't think that's a big problem. I, I don't want to send a mail notice out of there.
Right, no, that's why I said email.
Just an, just an email of the agenda.
That's why I said email.
And if, and if there's a, is a, something on there that somebody has a concern about or a potential question? They can either watch the wonderful TV presentation, or you want to make a motion to-
Eight-thirty break?
And make a motion to adjourn. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Excellent.
Okay. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Post. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.